We'll call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the plat of allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call.
Garrick?
Here.
Peppcorn?
Here.
Preston?
Here.
Strand?
Here.
Mahoney?
Here. The Seed Library has returned for spring of 2021 with a variety of vegetable, herb, and flower seeds available to the public at no charge while supplies last. The Fargo Public Library has added free books by mail service to its outreach services to assist community members who are homebound and unable to visit the library. Library patrons who qualify for the new program may order materials which are delivered in a reusable prepaid mail pouch that can be used to return the items. This evening, we're going to show a video detailing the third theme of our 2021 State of the City video, which is the accomplishing big things. This is one of the five overarching strengths which will power a strong 2021 for Fargo. I hope you enjoy. Fargo not only has a big heart, it has huge aspirations as well. We have already accomplished many massive feats with others well on the way. The Fargo-Moorhead area flood diversion project construction continues as we march towards permanent flood protection for the metro. We all understand sandbags are not permanent protection, and we stand ready to floodproof our area with this project. In order to successfully implement permanent flood protection, more than 200 properties in high-risk flood-prone areas needed to be purchased. Today, less than 10 in-town properties remain, and we couldn't be more grateful for this progress. Fargo's main avenue completed its two-year makeover in 2020, modifying it slick with additional trees, accessible parking, and a counterfo lane allowing turns onto northbound University Drive and easier access to the downtown neighborhood. And the project was completed more than a month early. The city further solidified its commitment to providing plentiful parking with the opening of mercantile ramp in 2020. The downtown ramp is a fourth within a few blocks of downtown to provide free weekend and nighttime parking. The new ramp maximizes efficiency by providing nearly 370 parking stalls while taking up the same amount of room as a surface lot would have. Public safety is another top priority, and a major step was taken in 2020 to facilitate a safe Fargo. The land for the eighth Fargo Fire Department station along 31st Street and 64th Avenue South was purchased with the goal of beginning construction very soon. Station number eight would help maintain low insurance rates for hundreds of homeowners and provide even faster response times for you. Accomplishing big things often requires maximizing efficiency, which is precisely what the engineering department and water department is doing by combining a water pumping station in Belmont neighborhood with permanent flood protection. This sort of two-for-one approach saves taxpayers money while accomplishing both goals and receiving 65% of necessary funding through a FEMA grant. A similar two-for-one approach is being applied to an 80-acre recreational lake and retention pond planned for future development south of 52nd Avenue. Lake Fargo could save as much as $15 million by eliminating multiple lift stations from separate holding ponds. It will be managed by the Fargo Park District, which will develop recreational programming such as kayaking and paddleboating. While we don't often think of drought in Fargo, it is historically a very real emergency. Just as the FM diversion flood throughs the metro, the Red River Valley Water Supply Project will drought-proof Fargo. The Massa Project is breaking ground this year and will provide a steady supply of water from Lake Ash Tabula when the Red River's and Cheyenne River's flows become too low. Fargo's downtown will see a new mixed-use skate lane at the corner of Main and Broadway in 2021. The city recently sold a parking lot to developers J.L.G. and F.I. Salter to construct a beautiful facility which will include office space, provide additional downtown housing. Great things are coming along Fargo's riverfront area as a tax increment financing district for the areas in the works. Creation of a TIF district would help provide funding for public improvements and open the door for private development along the Red River.
Funny how seasons are different. A year ago, we just finished getting sandbags ready for a flood. This year, we're looking for a spring with no sandbags. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 22, 2021 regular meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 26? So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, it's Strand and Preston. Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Preston? Garrick?
Yes.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We now go to public comment at this time in person. We have three speakers. Faith Dixon has asked if she could speak. She missed the sign up. If it's okay with the commission, we only have four speakers. Would that be okay? Okay. Alexander Simon, you're up. You know the word to go. Give your speech.
Liberty and justice for all. I guess not me. Not unless I get your permission. Welcome to COVID Stan where 25% of people get sick, less than 2% of them die, but 100% must suffer. Biggest lie of the past year, asymptomatic spread will wipe us out. Second biggest lie, we're all in this together. Nope. You haven't had to hold my wife while she cries herself to sleep from exhaustion because she's scared she'll lose the job she loves because she can't wear a mask. How do I argue facts against your feelings? It's as if you're in a cult. You can believe you can fly, but when you jump off this building, you fall. Oh, gravity, you're a heartless bitch. Your forcing of the mask is forcing your religion of fear down my throat. Your fear is making you do evil, wicked, and terrible things. Your rights are more important than your life. Without them, you're just a slave. The mask is your gateway drug to a vaccine. I won't receive it. What will you do to people that won't take it? Still haven't gotten an answer to that one. What'd you do to me? In 1933, Franklin Delano Roosevelt famously said, "Let me assert my firm belief that the only thing we have to fear is fear itself." Nameless, unreasoning, unjustified terror which paralyzes needed efforts to convert retreat into advance. You have become agents of chaos. You are useful idiots at best. You are complicit in demonic activity at worst. Your fear has become your religion. The mask has become a sacrament. The vaccine has become your holy grail. It's really too bad because you worship a god of deceit and death. What did Patrick Henry mean when he said, "Give me liberty or give me death"? Only on Sundays? Only when you thought it was okay? Unless there's a pandemic, I guess. We're all gonna die. But I guarantee, I don't know, data says 2% from COVID. So how many are in here?
Christina Klinghamer? Brad Schaefer?
So it was about a year ago that this idiot, Dr. Fauci, said that masks were not needed for this COVID. Think we can remember that. Commissioner Peppcorn, you agreed with that. Heard that at one of the commissionings. So masks do no good, as Commissioner Peppcorn stated. So we have a mask mandate that does no good, similar to if we required our Fargo firefighters to wear a respirator that did not work, but we required them to do that. This is idiotic, and this has to stop. You guys can vote tonight, and the vote will be three to two. And Mayor Mahoney, bless your heart, you're gonna make the call on this again. I would just ask that you make the right decision tonight. You make that decision, so what happens? Everybody in here takes their mask off, and we leave here safe and free. I mean, this is lunacy. This is lunacy, guys. I mean, I don't know how else to put it. This Fauci guy, another wrong decision. The first one was the right decision. The second decision he made, he said was to Kristi Noem, she would have 10,000 hospitalizations, 10,000. She had 600. Now the guy wants to have a mask mandate through 2022. Guy doesn't want to hug his grandchildren. I mean, I don't know what else to say. You were elected. Mayor Mahoney, you're a very wise man. I watched stuff you've done. You got two liberals, you got two conservatives. You're to swing vote every vote that makes any significance in the city. And you got it tonight, if you guys decide to vote. So I would just ask that you vote appropriately. We leave here safe. Don't wear a mask tomorrow. And Bob your uncle, you know, what a country. You know, we have the power to do that right now. And it rests with, well, really, it just rests with you. We know how the other four are gonna vote, basically. So, you know, let's just get this over with and just, I mean, day-gum, move on with life. This is, this has gone on way, way too long. We're a better people than this. We're a better country than this. And it's, I'm just honestly ashamed of kind of what's going on here.
Alexander, you know better. Faith Dixon, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to speak on this evening. Make sure that I use my two minutes in no profanity. This is number five. So thank you so much for putting that up there. More people need to follow. My name is Faith Dixon, and I want to address the Commissioner about the lack of accountability of the liquor board and liquor establishments. I have attended every many since May 2020. And time and time again, I see a certain Commissioner, I'm not gonna call any names, pushing and literally arguing over liquor sales, businesses, and property over people's lives. On last month, a young gentleman in our community was killed in a motor vehicle accident. His 18-year-old friend, who was driving intoxicated and was served alcohol at a local establishment called Cactus Jack's. This was a tragic loss for many in the community, and yet I didn't see any comments on ways the Commission could tackle the increase in underage drinking. But what I did see was mention of shutting down one establishment downtown in which an incident had occurred because of black-on-black crime being in the center of the media. So many lives have been affected by the loss of Isaiah Johnson, and I challenge the Commissioner, Commissioners, and the Mayor to get a better understanding that the abuse of alcohol is an issue in this community. And instead of continuing to add additional liquor establishments, how about adding more treatment facilities? Requiring establishments to purchase more efficient technology to detect fake IDs? Or just limiting the amount of licenses per year? This is a huge problem that needs to be addressed, and it needs your attention now. I thank you for allowing me to speak. Have a great evening.
Now we'll go on to public hearings. Item 28A, ADOC addition, 29th, 12th Avenue North. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 11/320. Zoning change from general industrial to general commercial. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and a plot of the ADOC addition. Aaron Nelson to explain.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So as you mentioned, item 28A is titled ADOC addition. This is a request for a minor subdivision and zoning map amendment. Subject property is located at 2900 12th Avenue North, which is just north of the Madison Neighborhood on the west end of the 12th Avenue Railroad overpass. The intent of this application is to accommodate commercial redevelopment of the subject property. Specifically, the proposed zoning map amendment would rezone the property from its current GI General Industrial zoning designation to GC General Commercial. The proposed subdivision would plat this property into two lots and establish a shared access along the common lot line, which would align with 29th Street North at the intersection of 12th Avenue North. To accommodate this proposed access at this location, the applicant has worked with the engineering department regarding proposed modification to the traffic control signal at the, to accommodate the addition of a fourth leg on the north side of the existing intersection. The cost associated with these improvements would be 100% special assessed to the subject property. And a waiver of protest regarding the special assessment has been drafted by the city attorney's office and has been signed by the owner and is included as part of this request. Staff finds the proposed application to be consistent with the applicable review criteria as outlined within the staff report. The application was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and staff's recommendation for motion for approval has included on the screen for reference. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for staff.
Commissioners? Aaron, what are they gonna do? They're just put a road?
The applicant is proposing to redevelop Lot 1. You might recognize this property from all the, I think, 100 or so green bins there. But their intent is to demolish the green bins on Lot 1, keep the existing building on the west end of that property there, and then convert it into a vehicle repair business. And they have no plans currently for the eastern lot, Lot 2, at this time.
Thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to discuss this zoning change? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Preston, Garrick, we're the two overs. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item B, Eagle Valley Fourth Edition, 73th, 23rd Street South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 12/120. It's a zoning change from public and institutional to a single-dwelling residential. It's a first reading of the rezoning ordinance, and it's a plot of the Eagle Valley Fourth Edition. Aaron Nelson to explain.
Thank you. And again, yep, this is a major subdivision and request for zoning map amendment. The subject property here is located at 7300 23rd Street South. This is just south of Davies High School. And the intent of this application is to accommodate low-density residential development of the subject property. The proposed zoning map amendment would rezone the property from PI, Public and Institutional, to SR4, Single-Dwelling Residential. And the proposed subdivision would replat the property into 40 residential lots and establish public street right-of-way for three new streets within the development, essentially linking 37th Avenue to 23rd Street, as shown on the plot on your screen. As outlined within the staff report, staff finds the request to be consistent with the 2007 growth plan and applicable requirements of the Land Development Code. This application is recommended for approval by staff and was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at their December 1st meeting. Also included in the staff report are a number of signatures and letters of protest that the city has received from area residents and opposition to the proposed development. In summary, many of the area residents voiced concerns over the loss of green space, potential increase in traffic congestion, potential stormwater drainage issues, and a feeling of being misled in regards to the long-term use of the subject property. This slide just illustrates the written protests received for the current application, the current proposal. So relating to the neighborhood protest, I do want to just quickly provide a little bit of context relating to the history of this property here. The subject property was originally platted and zoned as part of Eagle Valley First Edition in January of 2015, at which time it was sold to the Park District for potential future use. Since then, the Park District has determined that they have no use for the property and have since conveyed the property back to the applicant, who was the original developer of this area. So fast forward to, I guess, the fall of 2020, the developer submitted an application to replat and rezone the subject property for a mix of single and multi-dwelling residential. This slide on your screen here illustrates the original proposal consisting of 28 single-dwelling lots and one 2.3-acre multi-dwelling MR1 lot, which I believe they were proposing to develop townhomes on at the time. This application was heard by the Planning Commission in November, at which time the Planning Commission directed the applicant to work with the neighborhood and to address some of the concerns raised at that meeting. The applicant did put a considerable amount of work into several rounds of revisions to the proposed development in order to try and alleviate some of the concerns of the neighborhood, as well as they worked with city staff from the planning, public works, and engineering departments to develop a concept that also worked from a servicing and utilities perspective. And so the current proposal, which again is just shown here, is what the applicant came forward with in December for the final rendition, and this is the version that's in front of you here tonight. So in closing, I would just mention that in addition to city staff, we do have Dave Leaker, Executive Director with the Fargo Park District, as well as representatives from Eagle Valley, Eagle Ridge Development, excuse me, with us here tonight, should you have any questions for them. And then with that, I would just reiterate that the application is consistent with the city's growth plan, and staff and the Planning Commission recommend this request for approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have for staff.
Any questions with the Commissioners? Is there anybody who wish to speak to this? I have Matthew Kozak on the line, I believe, or in person.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name's Matt. I'm a resident of Eagle Valley. Our communities have a lot on what can be done. I, like many in others in our community, made the biggest purchase of our lives and did the research. And we're not getting what we originally thought we were gonna get when we bought. The plan on the table right now is SR4 for this lot. The original proposal, like stated, was MR1, SR4. The plan is not for the park-owned land we thought would be here when we purchased our home is there. The fact is, the city doesn't own the land anymore. I believe it was disclosed at the December Planning Commission. The lot sold the day before that December meeting, before you even got the opportunity to vote, before the commission had an opportunity to vote. Eagle Ridge does not want to build something zoned for public institute. That's not in their best interest. Our trust in the city has been damaged. The area today, as I speak, is listed on the city website as a park. To be clear, we understand the plan was for it to be a hockey arena, but really, anything in the community, anything the community could use would be better than homes. And the website is not clear that this was gonna be a hockey arena. If you go to PDF maps on the city website, under Work, there's a Fargo property zoning map. If you zoom in down to our area at the way bottom, the 7300 is still listed as a park right now at this very moment. It even has the park icon over it. If you go to PDF maps and look at the park map under Living, the green area where this lot is, is marked as green for park. There are people buying and selling homes as we speak in this area, and the city has it listed as a park. Eagle Ridge's marketing director and the Home Builders Association of Fargo-Moorhead have an article posted on their website, "Nine Questions to Ask When Choosing a New Home Lot." Their number eight states, "How is developed land around the lot zones?" If you are in that part of town, there may be a lot underdeveloped around you. Looking into zoning restrictions to see if you want to be near a busy commercial area. The city will usually have all this information on their website. That's the Home Builders Association of Fargo-Moorhead, and the marketing director from Eagle Ridge wrote this article. I mentioned this at the Planning Commission meeting with representatives from the city on the meeting. We're three months out, and it's still not changed. Our trust in the city has been damaged. At the Planning Commission in December, Mary Shurling mentioned that this issue is a known issue in zoning changes that the city does not have a plan to address, where something was promised or zoned and changed without residents knowing. We're not the first group to be here, and we won't be the last. We're also not the first to lose trust in the city, and we won't be the last. This area wasn't ag land. This area was owned by the Parks District. Was it not reasonable for us to think that that would be a park or some kind of facility that the community could use? Another concern is some of our neighbors have backyards opening up to this lot. In this new plan, their dream homes are gonna be opening up to someone else's backyard rather than to park-owned land with some kind of facility or park that they could use. It changes everything. I'd like to cite the Timber Creek case from November 4, 2019. Mayor Mahoney and Commissioner Garrick, you guys voted no for that one. And from what I could summarize your statements were, because the residents were promised something, and that's not what they're getting. Isn't that not the same situation here? I believe it was also allowed to be on the record that that was a valid reason to go against what the city had, or what the staff has recommended in the growth plan and that as well. But here we are. What can we do? The land is sold. Is this the best we're gonna get? It's SR4 because we don't want the MR1 there? And if you vote it down, does Eagle Ridge come back with that MR1 zoning? We're at a loss of what to do. My point is, the city has a problem. Residents cannot trust the city when making the biggest financial decision of their lives. How does the city plan to address this problem so future residents aren't hurt? Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak? Dave Leaker, I see you online. Did you want to address the park boards' change and what they wanted to do with that lot?
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, our original plans when we did purchase this property was to purchase the property for a possible two-sheet ice facility. And in working with the developer, we did purchase that at or below, and Mr. Bullis could probably confirm that, at or below market price, on the basis that if we didn't construct our ice facility there, that they would be able to purchase it back at the original mark, or original price that we purchased it. And so over the years, we had talked about a two-sheet ice facility or a possible swap with the Fargo School District, who's got about eight acres just north of our softball diamonds at Davies and east of the football field, potentially if they wanted to build an elementary school there. And we could swap that eight acres for their eight acres and build our ice facility just east of the football field. So those were our original intentions when we purchased that land. And with the new developments of the Park District working on this indoor sports complex and relocating our ice sheets over there, we didn't have a need for this eight acres. We currently have, I believe it's a four-to-five acre neighborhood park that was planned with the developer and constructed before the homes got in there, and also an additional six acres to the south of that, which has a regional retention pond with additional acreage around that. So in all, in all essence, you have about a little over a 10-acre park down there, which is more than enough to satisfy a typical neighborhood park. So at no time did the Park District ever plan to expand that neighborhood park to the north with parkland. It was only gonna be, if anything, either a school or a two-sheet ice facility. So that was our plans. I know, you know, in looking at, you know, the GIS, the city's GIS system, it might say Fargo Park District owned. I guess I'm not sure about how it was designated as a park, or if that was Google, Google Maps or something, but, you know, we did own the property, but we didn't have any intentions of expanding that neighborhood park to the north.
Thank you. Is there anybody else publicly wishes to speak? This is a new deal, Alex. Close public hearing. Did you want to say something?
Oh, John Eunice with Eagle Ridge Development. Mayor, Commissioners, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have. I think Aaron did a great job of explaining kind of the history, and I think Dave also did a pretty good job of explaining the history of the property.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, would move to approve, and then I have a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Preston?
Aaron, can you point out the park and the retention pond that Dave, Mr. Leaker, was talking about?
Yes, I can. So, you can see my cursor there. So, here's the subject property, south of Davies. Immediately south of the subject property is the, I want to say it's around four acres, I shouldn't guess at that, but this was the original park that was dedicated as part of the typical 8% to 10% of land area that's dedicated to the Park District as part of any residential subdivision. And then the third lot to the south, where the pond is today, was additional retention area that I believe the Park District also owns, or at least maintains this today. And you can see the park facilities kind of straddle both sides, or both lots today.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, it just seems like the developer has really done their work in trying to meet the concerns of the neighborhood, so I'd support this.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 29, COVID-19 update, Fargo-Cass public health issue, or update, I'm sorry. I think Desi, that is you.
Yep, I'm on. Thanks. Good evening, mayor and commissioners. Today's COVID results have Cass County at 123 active cases. The 14-day rolling average positivity rate is 2.09% in Cass County and 2.18% for North Dakota. Currently, there are 22 individuals hospitalized across the state. There have been 196 deaths in Cass County. Through surveillance efforts, six UK variant strains have been identified within the state. Since our peak in November, testing numbers have decreased by 47% in Cass County and 49% across the state. Cass County accounts for roughly 18% of the state's current testing numbers. Testing continues to be available for long-term care, close contacts, and travelers, along with diagnostic testing at the health systems. Rapid tests are also available to the general public, Monday through Friday, at our static testing location. That location will be changing by the end of this week, as our current site was sold. So, we'll look for information coming out shortly on a new location for that site. Fargo-Cass Public Health remains busy with our vaccination efforts. As of today, there have been over 55,000 vaccines given in Cass County, representing a 20.3% first-dose coverage rate overall. Fargo-Cass Public Health has given over 16,000 of that total. We are working towards the end of 1B priority group that is scheduled for this week, and have put out a press release to start gathering 1C priority group contacts, which covers all essential workers. We've seen allocations within the county increase with the federal pharmacy program for Thrifty White, as well as the state allocations increasing, so we have begun moving faster through priority groups. Again, it is helpful if you are on multiple facility lists and have already received your vaccination to then update the other agencies, so everyone's list can stay up to date. And if you missed your opportunity for your initial priority group, there's still a chance to be vaccinated, so please contact Fargo-Cass Public Health or visit our website to sign up for our contact list. Thank you. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions? Mr. Garrick?
It's not for Desi, it's just in general, talking about the update here. There's a lot of people in the community that want to know what we're going to do with the mask mandate and the mandates in general, so I'm hoping that we can have a short discussion here today and either reassure people that it's going to end soon or that it's going to keep going. If the numbers stay the same and there's no dramatic changes, are we planning on getting rid of the mask mandate?
So, we got recommendations from a physician group, as well as the Board of Health, that we have three criteria that we're looking at. Number one is if it's less than 3%, which it is, the incident in the community. Two is the amount of variants, and Desi just reported that the variance is not very high at this time. In fact, it's been very small. And then three is the vaccination, is how much we've got in the vaccination. The only element that we're concerned about is we're just getting into 1B, and these are your people, we're grocery stores, we're all our essential services, restaurants, bars, everything, and they're the ones that probably are higher risk in the group to get it. We anticipate in the next two weeks making a huge dent in that. So I think the intent would be finish the mask mandate on March 22, unless there's other feelings with the commissioners. Any other discussion? Any questions for Desi? Okay. Thank you, Desi. Chief David Zabowski, you have a new video for us that you guys have been working on, and I think your team has been working on mission and values, and you have worked vigorously on this since you arrived, and I believe you have some good news for us, that the team got involved and came up with something for us.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the opportunity to preview this this evening. There's been a lot going on in the department the last five months, but I'd say one of the cornerstone quintessential projects that is now complete, at least for public viewing, is the establishment of our new vision, mission, and core values. So that kind of establishes everything else that we do as a department in terms of how we provide service, how we hold ourselves accountable, and how we conduct our activities in the field. This team was made up of volunteer department members, sworn in civilians from all areas of the department. They did an outstanding job, I think, as you'll see in the video. Very proud of their efforts. I think it starts to set the bar for the future of our department in a very positive way, so very pleased to be able to show this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
In order to be a successful and respected law enforcement agency, everyone within our department and our community needs to understand our collective vision and our day-to-day mission. Most importantly are the set of core values that explain how we provide service to the community, what we hold ourselves accountable to, and what the community can expect from us. Fargo is a growing, diverse, and vibrant community. Through the efforts of our collective team, we have set a forward-thinking new bar in terms of vision, mission, and values that will help set the stage for how we engage the public, serve the community, and work in collectively reduce crime, fear, and disorder. I'm very proud of the work of the department members that put this together. I'm sure you will be as well.
Our vision is our gold standard. It's our ideal state of perfection in our community. The Fargo Police Vision is a safe and unified community built on trust, accountability, and inclusion. We'll work hard every day towards that vision by adhering to our mission.
The mission of the Fargo Police Department is to provide the highest quality of service through community partnerships.
Being a well-trained police department.
And forward-thinking policing to improve the quality of life for all.
Our values are what's important to us. The Fargo Police Department values are an acronym of the word Fargo PD, with each letter representing a different value.
We are committed to provide unbiased services to all members of our community.
We take responsibility for our actions and are responsible for holding the community accountable. We are mindful that we answer to each other, the department, and most importantly, the people we serve.
We believe all human life has value and deserves respect. We will treat all those we serve in a compassionate, courteous, and dignified manner.
We will guard, protect, and preserve all life and property in the Fargo community, as well as each other.
Officer wellness. In order to provide the best possible service to our community, our officers need to be mentally and physically healthy, both at home and in our professional role as police officers.
We demonstrate professionalism by being accountable, competent, and character-driven in our role to safeguard the community. We strive to implement the latest technologies and law enforcement practices to give our community the best service possible.
We recognize that our community is very diverse. Our department strives to be inclusive of all cultures and backgrounds, while committed to being impartial, unbiased, and respectful to all our citizens.
As you can see, the establishment of our vision, mission, and values was a collective effort across the entire department team. We are committed to these guiding philosophies and principles and take them with us every day when we go out into your neighborhoods. And we very much look forward to working collaboratively with you for greater prosperity and safety, as we work to transition a very good department and city to a great department and city.
Very nicely done. Appreciate that. I'm glad you had time to visit, get the departments, what they want to do. Next, we'll move to bid award a project WA 1910, excuse me, downtown water tower construction. Base bid award to Phoenix Fabricators for combined construction contract. Explanation by Troy Hall.
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. Come this evening with item for the tower bid award. I think I have some real good news on the tower costs here, and I think the cost savings is well worth the rebid effort. With me tonight, Megan will be presenting in a little bit, and I also have Tom Willey and Tim Postian of Apex Engineering in the audience. And I'll go to the next slide here. And this will be, this is a slide from before, but this will be a much abbreviated presentation compared to the January 11 one. But we're building one new tower to replace three older towers that are in need of significant repair, and also it's going to really improve our hydraulics and operation of our system. And so, with rebuilding, it improves the lifecycle cost by about $3 to $7 million, and then plus, we did the mayor, city administrator Bruce Scrub, and Dan Portlocker, water utility engineer, were able to secure a $2.81 million grant for the project well, which is great. And this is the end product. We're building the new tower on our old Tower One site, and the cool part about this is when we build the new tower, we'll have actually three sites in which the potential for redevelopment and involvement of our neighborhood associations, and then it also blends in with the downtown in focused master plan. So, getting to the bid results, we actually had, this time around, we actually had three bids of three of national tank constructors, very tight bids. What we try to do in our bidding documents is we try to get, we want to get multiple bids for the city to get competitive pricing. We also want to make it stringent enough to where we get large tank builders as well. So, as far as the cost savings compared to the first bid, we add a $1.35 million reduction in the combined bid, which is, the combined bid is general mechanical and electrical contracts all lumped together, where the general covers all of them. But likely how we would have looked at that first bid is, in both bids, we had no mechanical bids in the contract, so likely how we would have looked at it is we would have, state law allows us to work with the general contractor to have them cover the mechanical bids, so under that scenario, we save, we would have saved just under $1 million on the second bid, which is really fantastic. And then, as far as the, so it was about 11.5% bid reduction. As far as the recommendation, what we are recommending, and here's the exact language on your slide of how we are awarding this tower contract. It says that we'll award on the base bid, and any bid alternates would be looked at separately, and that's exactly how we're doing this recommendation. So, with the combined bid contract, it's Phoenix Fabricators for $7.635 million, and they were, let's see, about $61,000 under the second bidder, so that's good. And then, just as an FYI to you, because we are still over the engineer's estimate, but we've, Water Utilities bid four other projects since last August, and all of those were underestimated, so were about $1.7 million underestimate on those four projects, so between that and then the grant, we didn't break the financial model for the water utility, so good news on that. And then, how we would pay for it, we have the base bid, the State Water Commission grant of $2.81 million, and then the water utility infrastructure sales tax would be $4.827 million. So, between those, it would cover it. And then, I just want one other point I'd like to make, and then I'll turn it over to Megan, is that the State Water Commission grant, that was real late in the game for us, we were planning the project, but our financial model was to, because it's really critical infrastructure, our financial model was to just pay for all of it with infrastructure sales tax. So, the State Water Commission grant was a big deal, and it helps with everybody's water rates long-term. So, with that, the motion will be on one of the future slides. I'll turn it over to Megan.
Troy, do we want to just, since we're going to bid these separately, should we just bid the first one, and then Megan come up and we can discuss the bid alternative?
Sure. So, you want to make a motion to approve 31A?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. Now, Megan, if you would be so kind, bid alternative one to the Phoenix Fabricators.
Thank you, mayor and commissioners. Back in January 11, staff presented to you the process for the water tower art, project processes, community engagement, and how ultimately it led to a design, which is up on your screen, which is bid alternate number one. First and foremost, water tower is critical infrastructure. However, it does provide an opportunity to integrate arts and infrastructure together. The Public Art Master Plan includes multiple references to including art and infrastructure, most specifically Goal Number Six. So, the Arts and Culture Commission has been talking about this idea for a number of years. It's also a topic that's in the process for discussion between the North Dakota Department of Transportation and the North Dakota Council on Arts, this connection of art and infrastructure. Up on your screen is the image that the Arts and Culture Commission selected, which is, again, bid alternate number one. Phoenix Fabricators bid includes a price for this art for $186,901, and staff is recommending allocation of funds towards this project for the mural. There's a couple of projects up on your screen slated for, or had been thought of for last year, but largely, they did not occur, it was largely due to the pandemic. Up on your screen is the bid tabulation, and you'll see highlighted in red is Phoenix Fabricators up at the top. And on your screen is the recommended motion. You'll see number two, as you made a motion and voted on already, item number one. So that concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any commissioner questions to Megan? Mr. Garrick?
How long will the art last?
My understanding is it will, the material is slated to be 25-year, but Troy may have 25-year paint, as I understand it to be, up.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could also just say, this relates back to pro 2030, and it has its roots in the strategic plan that was put together by the community, so.
Any other, roll call vote, please.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Item 32, request for an extension of Class A alcoholic beverage license for Irish Hospitality doing businesses, Hennessy's Irish Pub, until 6/30/22, delayed from the 2/22 regular meeting. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. The Class A liquor license that was, or is held by Irish Hospitality, came to the Liquor Control Board with a request to extend the requirements of 251512 until June 30 of 2022, due to the timing and the nature of development. The Liquor Control Board approved that at that time, at the February Liquor Control Meeting. And so, I know that this item was on the agenda two weeks ago and was requested to be pulled, and then the applicant was not able to attend, and so it's on the regular agenda for tonight.
Eric Johnson. There's some rules around one of our shut
Eric Johnson, there are some rules around when a bar shuts down, how long they get to keep the bar or keep the license when they have a, to shut the business down. Aren't we well beyond that time?
Yes, I mean, I mean, there are three different definitions as to how, we're well past the time that this particular location, I believe, by their statement, discontinued business in, I believe, January 2019. So we're quite a ways past that. There is a opportunity to make a request for an extension of up to six months. There were some, and there were some other circumstances that went into play on all of this. Steve might be able to provide a better explanation of that than me, but in any event, you're absolutely right, your honor, or your honor, Mayor.
Discussion. Mr. Pepcorn, do you remember why we extended this?
I, I don't, and I apologize for that, but I do think we've, we've done that, and I think time is up. That's my perspective. And so Commissioner Garrick, you might have a comment?
Yeah, in our discussion, I had control with the four of us, you know, it's been a weird time, the last year or so has been, it's been different. And so it's not as though it's all even, the way that this, this license has been handled versus in the past, given COVID and everything else. You know, the reason that we don't just give it, they don't give it back, and they just purchase it again, is because it's $100,000. So they've made a dramatic investment. If we take it away, they've lost that investment, and we may not get that, that back. So we, as Liquor Control, I think it was 4-0, 4-0 to extend it, and those are kind of the reasons for it.
Why did they not extend to six months, but that's more common practice?
You remember the conversation? Why did they do it for longer than six months?
I, I think that they didn't want to keep coming back to the commission with that, with kind of that, you know, here they come again, kind of a thing. And I have had some conversations recently with the applicant, that I think they're open to a six month, but that was the reason that they went. They feel that by the time they get to June of 2022, that they will have a business open instead of just a business plan.
But yet, if we look at the timing, it's almost been two years we've given an extension. If it was January of 19, so we're now in January, past January of 21, so we've already got them two years. What if another bar wanted to come into town?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Preston?
So I'm getting confused here. We're talking about extensions, but in fact, it was not an extension last June, right? Was there not an application for renewal of the license? So was that clear to the Liquor Control Board? And in my mind, that goes back to full disclosure from, from the license holder?
So the license has been renewed in June, on June 30 of 2019, and also 2020. And so I would imagine that, you know, the applicant is here, he could speak to.
I have a Mark Hanson from the Nillis Firm. That is going to speak.
Mayor Mahoney, Commissioners, my name is Mark Hanson. I'm a lawyer at the Nillis Law Firm, and I represent Irish Hospitality Doing Businesses Hennessy's Irish Pub. And a lot of questions asked already. I think I can hopefully address all of them. First of all, the timing of the request until June 30 of 2022 falls on me, and I'm afraid that may have caused some angst or consternation that was not intended. I had viewed this license as being renewed through June 31 of 2021. The ordinance doesn't say come back every six months. I think that's anecdotally what's kind of done when people come in and ask for extensions. So I viewed it as, if we did an extension of six months, that would take us to the end of this year. As, as Steve said, there obviously are some unique circumstances that have happened in the last two years with regard to what one can do with a license. I think it would be fair to say that 2020 was a difficult year for anyone that is looking to take the license and open up a new bar. To do that, it would be very difficult to go in and open up a new bar that you can't even open, and then maybe go to 25%, that, that type of thing. So I think that's a, that's a real, that's a reality. So when I, I heard there was some concern about the length of that extension, I circled back, and as, as Auditor Sprague said, the question is, do we come back in six months and say, we found a location, and here's where we're at, which we're more than fine doing? Or is the expectation that we come back in six months and the bar has to be open and operating, which will be extremely difficult to do? It's just not a reality, frankly. So that's one thing that maybe seeking some guidance on is, you know, city commissions change, Liquor Control Board members change, and frankly, what, what those bodies look for individually changes also over time. So the intent of asking until the summer of 2022 is more of a matter of, I don't want to have to come back and say, we're not there yet, but here's where we're at. The same token, if that's what this body wants, we're more than willing to do that. So this license has a little bit of a context to it, and I think Eric referenced that earlier. This license came about in 2014. There was an issue, an awkward issue, frankly, that arose with regard to whether Hennessy's could use the Z license that Bulldog Tap had. And rather than debate that issue, those that were involved, and Eric was involved, Steve was involved, the Liquor Control Board, the City Commission, we rolled up our sleeves and we came up with a solution. There were also other licenses at that time that were operating two facilities with one license. Vinyl Tacos, JL Beers, great people there, they got involved. There was also, I'm showing my age now, back when I probably went to more of the bars, but there was Plain Makers that had a number of different types of bars under one roof. And so everyone got together, we came up with a compromise. Now, part of the compromise, frankly, was my client had to pay $115,000 for a license. That debatably may or may not have been needed, but we put that aside. But also, this license is what I call the new A license, A9 and after, have limited transferability. What that means is this license can't be sold on the open market to me or to anyone else. It can be sold as part of the business, and it can be sold if it's transferred and that business is sold, or if there's death or that type of thing. So I think Commissioner Garrick pointed out, the result would be, if it's not transferred to a new home, we call it, where it's used, then it goes back to the city. One of the questions is, are there other people looking for this license? I don't know. Again, I would suspect last year, probably not, because why would you buy a license at $115,000 and not be able to open up your bar facility? But if somebody were looking for a license, then if it was me, I came in, guess what I would do? I'd come back and say, I can't, I can't open the bar yet. Here's what we're doing, here's where we're at. So we'd be in the same boat, just with somebody else making the same request. So I think what the answer is, is frankly, that it be, it be extended until the, I think it's the September 20th, 2021 is the date of your city commission meeting in September. Now, we will come back, and in fact, I had contemplated, and maybe had even asked to pull the request, to come back in June when this license was up for renewal, and come back in May with some more information, put in your packet, as to where we're at with regard to what's going to be done with this license. I think if we went with kind of the six-month rule, six months from now, that puts us into the, I think, September 20th City Commission meeting, we come back and say, here's where we're at with this license. Now, if the expectation is a bar is open using this license, we're not going to meet that expectation. But if it is, here's where we're at, here's where we're at with the, with the developer, here's where that development is at, just to show you in good faith that this really is being worked on to be used, then I think that probably is a good answer to the concerns that I'm hearing. And again, I apologize if my request until the summer of 2022 is too long and caused angst, that wasn't the intent.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner Preston?
Yeah, Mr. Hanson, I don't know if you want to answer this, or if Mr. Erickson wants to answer, but it seems to me that there's still a base concern about the fact that when the licensed establishment closed, that there was no formal notification to the city, that indeed that license was no longer operating. And in fact, when I look back on the application, it looks to me like the old address was being used for Hennessy's when in fact Hennessy's was closed. Is that correct?
I can't answer that or not, but I suspect that you, that one would use the, the license that it was issued under. But I don't think under the, under the ordinance is that that necessarily means that there was any, any statement of representations that Hennessy's wasn't open. I don't really think that was ever unknown or, or in, in dispute at all.
Was there a notification to the city that the operation had closed?
I don't, I don't know if there was. I don't know that there needs to be, under the ordinance.
Let me, let me just say, I had a business that, that functioned completely with a license. The first thing I did when I was changing anything in my business was look back at the statute to make sure that what I was planning was in line with that. And if not, I called the department to figure out whether what I was doing would be okay under the license. It seems to me that there's some negligence here in, in not doing that full research and notification. So again, what we're talking about here tonight, it seems to me, goes back to, you know, the initial two times were renewals on a license that was not operating. Yes, we can still do an extension tonight, but that is the base issue here, is lack of disclosure in my mind.
Well, you know, all I can tell you is I don't think this is anything different than any other license that has been in this type of a circumstance. I mean, it matters what I, what I observe and what I see, but anecdotally, this is not unique. These licenses, right or wrong, do sit there, and they, they might be open for a year or so. I have clients that have bought A licenses that have been on the market and unused for over a year, but they're still, you know, they're, they're still a valid license. I mean, I don't want to name names of other license holders now, but there's at least two I know of that aren't, that have been open for more than a year or more and maybe aren't being used. So, and I don't think that's a problem within the liquor community, if you will. People understand that only these licenses, that they just, you can't within 30 days say, here's what I'm going to do with this license. That's just not a reality. So the problem you have is applying these statutes or these ordinances in a, in a squared peg round hole. Some of these ordinances, just as you try to apply them, just don't make sense in the reality of development. So over time, the custom and practice of how these ordinances have been applied and used have been accepted within the, the liquor community. And I don't think that liquor owners of licenses have a concern if there's an extension and there's an understanding that that owner is trying to, to use it for something. So I don't think there's been any lack of transparency whatsoever. It might just be trying to adapt to what different city commissions and/or liquor control boards might want.
Commissioner Preston?
You do understand that there's two different processes here, right? I mean, the reason that the six-month extension is six months, it seems to me, is to keep an eye on whether that license is working towards an operating site. A renewal is just a renewal for an operating establishment, and that in fact is just a much less probably, well, scrutinized, although I have to say that probably the extensions haven't been scrutinized very well either. But it gives the city commission an opportunity to scrutinize whether the license that is out there not operating is churned and brought back into an active status as quickly as possible. Let me ask Steve, so other extensions or other businesses that have stopped operating, have they pretty routinely been notifying you when they stop operating and then request an extension?
That's a hard question to answer, just
Really?
Right off the top of my head. I, I can think of cases where licenses, where we have routine of, of coming back and asking for the extension, and I can think of cases where it didn't happen, too. I know when, when Outback left, and, and they came back, I mean, they just closed and went out of business, they came back over a year later and then asked to be able to sell their license. And we said, well, no, you, you know, you missed all of this time. And so that was Outback. Then there was the, the license that Wanzic acquired
Yeah.
From Olive Garden. And they were very diligent about coming back and asking for extensions. So.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a final statement here. It seems to me that the city and hopefully the Liquor Control Board will tighten up this process so that extensions are very following, basically, the law. And I don't have any trouble with extending this for six months, but certainly not a year and a half.
Mr. Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll make the motion to continue this till 9:20. That's the meeting in September, and that's my motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Garrick, you had a comment?
Yeah, in, I think you have a valid concern. I think you identified a loophole that we haven't been tight on before. So I don't think that they are doing anything uncouth. I think they're playing within the rules of the game that they've been given, you know what I mean? So that's, I think, how it's written, and we can definitely look at improving that process, and I'm all for doing that.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. What does our policy say?
I don't know that it's, you know, that the ordinance says exactly, you know, how long the term should be, but the past practice has been about six months. As Commissioner Preston said, then people can come back and they can inform us of what progress they've made in finding a final resting place for the license.
Actually, the ordinance does say, and that's what I asked Eric about, the ordinance offers three options, John, and oftentimes, the best option is 60 days, business days, and then it's gone. So we do have an ordinance that's in place, so they have to request from Liquor Control an extension, or they're not allowed to go further.
Any other discussion?
Bear with me, Mayor. So, Mr. Johnson, in that light, are they in compliance or not?
Well, as, as I mentioned before loosely in the mayor reference, yeah, there are sort of three definitions, and the, the longest one is about two months being out, out of business in one way or the other. I think the reality, though, is that we have a fairly longstanding practice of, of not rigidly adhering to that. It, it's just, there isn't a mechanism at City Hall to sort of police that on a daily basis. And so in this particular case, for example, they've paid their renewal license, they've gotten a renewal license, particularly during the COVID, and that's not altogether unusual. So that's, that's where the rub is occurring, just in, in, in the practice, not so much policy. You asked about policy. I don't think there's a written policy to this effect, other than the ordinance, but as a practice, you know, this has just been sort of a working relationship between the city and the licensees, I guess is maybe the best way of saying it.
Mr. Strand?
So Commissioner Garrick, and over the years, talks about picking and choosing winners and losers. Are we doing that here, where we're deciding arbitrarily, or this week versus last week versus next week? I, I like to be driven by policy, the letter of the policy. Are we picking and choosing winners and losers here, or?
Well, like Eric said, and I think Steve said, you know, this is just kind of how we've operated up until now, up until, it hasn't been a problem yet, so we haven't treated it as a problem. So there is no policy, it's just what
So we, we've had a discussion with Commissioner Preston with Health, is one of the ones that does compliance and underage drinking, also a police chief, has calls for service. We have discussed with both commissioners, we may want to relook at our renewal process and tighten it up, Commissioner Strand. So you're exactly right. And maybe we need to rewrite that ordinance, so it's not two months, it's here's what happens unless you go to Liquor Control, get an extension. It, it needs to be looked at, to your point, you can't pick winners and losers. The effect of this gentleman is that his bar would take $112,000 loss, and then if you want to go back into business, he'd have to apply and pay he wanted to go back into business, he'd have to apply and pay another $112,000. So it's a $240,000 swing. So that's what they're asking for, mercy of can we go another six months and show us you're doing something. Mr. Preston.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the liquor control board and staff, whether that be attorney and/or auditor's office, to, to clear up this extension process so that if indeed somebody closes and an extension is not necessarily requested, which in my mind, that's what's happened here, what happens to that license? Do we buy it back? Do they have to, you know, provide it without any kind of financial transaction? All of that I think needs to be clarified and probably even put into an ordinance.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll take a five-minute break and come back at 6:16 to read the meeting. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. We have a recommendation from Commissioner Pepcorn for changes in alcoholic beverage ordinance. Commissioner Pepcorn.
Sure, and we'll just, I'll start it out maybe with the first about the makeup of the, of the liquor control board right now. And right now we have the police chief and Steve Sprague and, and city employees that are on the, on the board. And I think what really kind of brought it was with the new police chief basically saying he wasn't exactly comfortable remaining in that position. And I think over the years, the other staff, we used to have the city attorney on there as well, and so I just think this was kind of a good time for that. And so that's the number two part of it. And basically what we would do is then use the same process as the other parking commission or the, the other boards where we'll have interested people send in applications, then the mayor will come forth with recommendations. One of the concerns was there, it's a learning curve. Obviously, the, the liquor control board, it's, it's, it's pretty meticulous, I mean, there's some specific things and like we've just been talking about, there's a lot of things in there. And so to have maybe one of the terms last only one year would not be good. I think this, it's, it's one of those where it's going to take some time for people to learn how to be a good board member. And so that's, I, I do think it's a good thing. And, and so that's the second part. The first part is about just changing, like Commissioner Strand was talking about our process. We had an issue with, with, with an appeal and we have to change the way we do that. So it goes to the liquor control board, but also, so if, if somebody has something that they can come to the city commission and we can hear their appeal as well. And so, and maybe Eric, obviously you can speak much better than I can about that, but we had a judge basically recommend to us that we change our process for that. So thank you.
Certainly, I can, no, that's a good explanation. Yeah, the, the part of this ordinance that's in front of you being changed is to address a decision that recently came down from district court. It was sort of a technical matter. We've had a longstanding practice where if there's a disciplinary process, it starts as the, like the liquor control board. It sort of works just like the planning commission. They frequently make recommendations to the city commission, and that's the way it's worked with liquor control board. Their decision is a, a recommendation to the city commission. In this particular case of this, this claim, it was North Star Hospitality versus the City Fargo is the case, that was what happened as well, is liquor control board make a, made a recommendation. City commission also had a public hearing, but the court just looked at the, at the, at the record and just felt that there was, and easily cured by this ordinance change, we think, is, didn't recognize the city commission hearing as a full evidentiary hearing, but rather as an appeal. And so just remanded it back for, so the city commission could, could then have a, a public hearing. And so that will, will come in due course, but, but for purposes of addressing that sort of a technical decision of the court, this ordinance would just formalize the, the role of the liquor control board when it comes to those kind of things, sets it up as the opportunity for a hearing and then authorizes an appeal, so to speak, for another hearing in front of the city commission and makes it clear so that we address any, any problems or any, any confusion in that regard.
Questions of the commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if
Mr. Preston.
I just am so glad to see this. Liquor control board has existed for what, 20, 30 years at least, with no definition in ordinance level of its role, its accountabilities, or its makeup. So this is, I think, a really good step to beginning to, to make it clear even inside or within the city in regards to the, the structure and the process, but also to license holders.
Mr. Garrick.
There, there's a lot in here that I like. I agree with you, Dave, that we shouldn't have, you know, our employees on, on the board making those decisions. It makes it more political for them, whereas they should be more the subject matter experts. So I, I agree with you on that. However, we're, we're putting ourselves in a little box here. It says now in ordinance that only one commissioner can be on the liquor control board. Well, that means I just got fired. So I don't like that. I like being on the liquor control board. So there's a lot more in here than just what's on the surface. And then you look at the other part of this and it says that you have to go to liquor control board before it gets to the city commission. What if something happens and we just decide to have a hearing here at city commission level? Do we have to wait a month for liquor control board to meet and that happen, have, have that afterwards? So I don't understand why we're trying to be overly restrictive in our ordinance. We can have a framework, but shouldn't, shall should be used in, in this stuff. You should go to liquor control first, not you shall go to liquor control first. Those, those legal terms matter. So I think we need to talk about this a lot more before we start changing ordinances. The other thing is every time I bring up something about liquor controls to this body, it always goes, hey, did liquor control talk about this? We haven't talked about this at all. So it should go back to us first in accordance with this law. So that's, that's my thoughts.
Eric, can you comment on the question, if there was a problem with a bar in town, would it have to go to liquor control first before come back to the commission?
Yeah, this ordinance as, this proposed ordinance as a draft that does sort of indicate that the first stop is at liquor control board. And I think what Commissioner Garrick is saying is could there be some latitude in there? That might be the normal process, but at least authorize the city commission to sort of sidetrack it if the city commission wanted to do so. That's certainly a decision you can make. Right now it does indicate that the first stop is liquor control board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Preston.
So there's really no reason the liquor control board couldn't call a special meeting if there was a timing issue, right?
Correct.
So I don't see that there would be any real need for skipping that process.
Mr. Press, Pepcorn.
Mr. Chair, but Eric, one of the reasons was that the, the judge recommended this so then there's a process, so then if, if a liquor license holder wants to appeal, they start at the liquor control, then they go to the city commission. Isn't that, that's, that's what I thought. They were, they were very specific about that.
Right. And I, I think the idea is to have a, a process identified and to recognize that the actual decision is by the city commission and that the city commission has a hearing. So I, I think that's what satisfies the judge's decision.
Mr. Preston.
And so that it's consistent from case to case, so that we're not skipping that step in the process for some and not for others.
No, I, I think that's a valid point. I mean, I, I think about the planning process again, just as an example, you know, I don't know, it may be that there have been, on occasion, maybe once or twice in the time I've been around, which is quite a while now, where the city commission decided to move something forward, but it doesn't happen without planning commission analysis first. But I think that would have been a rare exception and would be at odds with the normal process. You know, that might be the case here as well, even if it, if it does say the first stop is liquor control board. If the city commission wanted to take it on, it might not be the end of the world. But again, we, we set up these kinds of things to develop a sort of practice and, and exactly how it needs to work isn't necessarily, there's not all kinds of legal precedent for it. If you wanted to establish it that the first stop is the liquor control board as it's drafted right now, I think that's perfectly fine. If you wanted to create some kind of flexibility, as Commissioner Garrick is saying, I'm not saying you can't do that. It's, I think it's certainly possible as well.
But as this being the first reading, any suggested changes could be next meeting as well, if we wanted to incorporate some ideas. Is that correct?
This is a receive and file, so we aren't even at first reading yet. We wanted to make some changes between now and, and two weeks from now. You can certainly introduce them and we can make an amendment and, and have that amendment handled before the second reading.
Commissioner Garrick.
We do see the irony here, right? We're, we're taking this ordinance or bringing it in front of the city commission first before liquor control board, when the ordinance itself says you must go to control board first.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to that.
Hold on.
Just, okay, Commissioner Garrick.
So the irony is, is clear. And then for some reason, we're being really overly restrictive. So why does it say one commissioner? Why can't it say at least one commissioner? Right? As long as it's not three, you're good. I see this as a backdoor way to get me off that committee is what I see.
Mr. Preston.
The difference that I see in this versus having the liquor control board as the first step in a process when it comes to licensing issues, what we're doing here is setting up the liquor control board, formalizing it. It's a policy about the structure, not a case that's coming through to be approved or denied. So totally appropriate for the city commission to be doing this.
Commissioner Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, I'm just curious about process and timing here. If today's March 8th, today's the receive and file of this proposal, assuming if it did go forward, March 22nd would be the first reading? And then does that mean that the second and final reading and/or approval would happen after that? Or does that happen on March 22nd or would it go to April 5th?
Yeah, the normal process would be three meetings to have receipt and file, first reading, second reading, and final passage. Oftentimes there's a, there's a meeting that happens beforehand, which is somebody directs the city attorney to draft something. In this particular case, Commissioner Pepcorn asked it to be drafted, so that's
But Eric, if you wanted to fast track it, can't you do it in two meetings?
You, you could. It's on the agenda now as receipt and file. If, if it had been set up to, to have first reading, waive the requirement or receipt and filing one week before first reading, we certainly could have done that. We didn't fast track it though. I, I think Commissioner Pep, Commissioner Pepcorn decided not to fast track it any, any faster, just to let it go through the normal process.
Correct.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you. I, I don't think it's any secret in our community that our liquor policies need to be addressed and, and updated and contemporized. I, I think we all know that. What I'm wondering and what I, the reason I was asking about timing here was I wanted to, I wanted to be assured that we have time to do our homework and time to learn what others do. This is the question I have, is what do other cities do? What are our benchmarks? What, what are policies that we could learn from, our mirror, or, or pitfalls that we could avoid? And, and I'm, I, so I think this is, thank you, Commissioner Pepcorn, for opening this process up. It's long overdue. But I'm, I'm still needing to have, and I'm not sure how we get those answers to, to compare ourselves. And what my concern is, I don't want us to misstep and next year have, have to look back at a policy where we, we, we didn't do our due diligence and we might have maybe missed some things. So that's, I want to do it right. So if I could, however, we can learn what other cities do, what our benchmarks are, what our models are, what our choices are, what our options are. I think this is a terrific approach, but I just want to rule those other questions in my mind out.
And I'm sorry Nancy Morris isn't here tonight, but she did some research on this, John, perhaps answer that in the next two weeks, but there has been some research done on this. Unfortunately, West Fargo followed our example and made a board similar to our board. Some boards are a little bit different across the state, but we, Eric, you guys could bring that back to us next month though, what type of liquor boards are across the state or across the nation for that question, right, John? Just, is there anyone that does it and how do they do it?
And statutory alliance.
Yes.
Alignment or not.
Mr. Garrick.
That was where I was going with that. I want to stop calling this a policy. Policies can change, all right, very easily. We could do all these things through policy right now, but this is a law. It's, it's different. It's much harder to change. Once it's in law, it's not going anywhere. So if you guys want a policy, let's do a policy. If you want a law, that's very different, just we're all on the same page there.
Mr. Pepcorn.
So Mr. Chair, so this is just the first step. I mean, we have to reform the liquor control board. That's the first step. We can't have city staff and the police making laws. That, that's the first step that we, we have to do that. I mean, we can't have it the way it's been in the past. That's the way it is now, and so we have to change that. That's our first step. And we're not, we're not speeding through this. We're going to do this in three meetings, so we're going to take our time, time and do it methodically. So that's what we're doing. And so I, I totally agree with you. I, I've talked to Commissioner Preston. We have lots of things we need to do on the liquor control board, but I don't want to just throw it all out and then throw something back in. We're just going to do it gradually and methodically, and that's what we're doing.
Mr. Strand.
Mayor, when is our legal counsel Nancy Morris back in town? Maybe we could have a conversation informally to just talk through these topics and, and not belabor us all at a city commission meeting. But I would, I'd sure like to hear more about what your research indicated.
Would you like to have a conference open, open meeting with the commission next week and have a discussion with Nancy Morris?
If she's available, if we could, if, you know, I, I don't think there'd be a downside to that. The public would now have a chance to
Yep.
Reach out to us. Is that okay, Commissioner Pepcorn?
To, to me, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll make the motion. I, I think we need to get this going. And there'll, like I said, there'll be three opportunities for public comment. I do think the commissioners will have plenty of time to, to visit with the, the assistant city attorney. So I think that's, that's good. We have lots of time. We are not going to rush through this, John, so that's my, that's what we know. But we have to make, we have to start and we have to start making changes. Otherwise it's going to continue the way it is and that we can't, we just cannot do that. So that's, I'll make the motion and I think that's just the initial, the initial start. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Strand.
Clarifying, are you leaving room, Commissioner Pepcorn, in that approach for us to have an informal brown bag or something?
Absolutely. And I guess, Mr. Chair, I guess, John, what I think, I think you should talk to Nancy individually, all of us, because I think everyone has specific questions. And then if there's something that we all need, I think that's the best way to do it. Instead of a brown bag, I think just individually, unless you prefer that, but I think that's the, the more expedient thing. And can I just say, she's skiing right now and I would much rather be doing that than this.
One thing on that issue, Mr. Strand, I do think if the board becomes commission is more going to be in the punishment or types of fines that are given, it may be good to show, to instruct all of us, because three of us have not been on that board. So I do think a brown bag in the future should be had, if it can't be next week sometime, and we can discuss that. Commissioner Preston has some ideas as far as renewing licenses. What should be judged on the renewing of a license? What are the different factors that go into that? Commissioner Garrick has some ideas of what you do if a bar is misbehaving. When do you start putting fines or something else in there? So that might grate for discussion. We'll see if we can get that on next week, Eric. And then again, I agree with Commissioner Pepcorn, has talked to her individually as well, because she's thought about this quite a bit. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Garrick?
No.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Applications for property tax exemptions for improvements made to buildings do have a motion.
I assume move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Sorry.
We just follow along.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We're going to set 7:30 Tuesday, April 13th, 2020, day 21, as the date of the board of equalization is to meet. Is there a motion?
I, I make that motion.
Is there a second?
Any discussion? Just so the public knows, that's when we set up the board of equalization as far as the mill levies goes, or the mill rate and such. Roll call vote.
Garrick?
Yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Peppcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes. And one other thing, John, I caught you on this rather than you catching me on this. But I would like to offer congratulations and thank you as to all the women serving on Team Fargo at all levels, including our frontline staff, our department heads, and on our commission today. It is International Women's Day today. Your contributions are immeasurable, and I ask everybody to join me in a round of applause to showcase your work and your leadership.
Kimber, please mark that down on the calendar. I got John Strand once on some date you did not know about. Any other business? Oh, excuse me. There was one other thing. Chief Zbowski had a little thing on testimony on, they're trying to lower traffic fines. Did you want to just quickly speak to that? Because I would assume we would, we worked hard to get the traffic fines to go up, and now somebody's trying to make the traffic fines. So, we will be doing testimony unless somebody objects here.
Yes. It was brought to my attention late last week that House Bill twelve-seventy-nine is, in essence, would revert the work that you did in the last session to increase the ability for speeding fines in municipalities. I've spoken with, well, actually Nancy Morris is the one that contacted me. So, I'm speaking with her and Bruce Grob about maybe putting together some type of a response for that. Do, uh-
Mr. Garrick?
-that change?
Chief, the one question is, is it dictated what we can, what we have to charge, or do they give us a range? Like, can we, we can lower it or raise it, or whatever we want to do, or are they telling us what it has?
I don't know all the particulars. I haven't had a time to look at it. But she brought it to my attention late Friday, and I told her in her absence while she's skiing, which is good, that I would at least bring it forward, I think, assuming that we would be in agreement that we're, we are in favor of what we did last time. She said that that was significantly changed in this particular bill.
Mr. Preston?
I just have a question. How many local control bills are out there, do we know? It just seems to be unending where it's being removed.
Mike, are you there? Do you know the local control issues? He's kind of our expert here today.
Our commissioners, that's a great question. Commissioner Preston, we don't have an exact number, but it would be over a dozen, I'm going to say, right now, or speaking in some degree to local control and home rule authority. Thank you.
Any other business? Motion adjourned?
So, move.
Second, adjourned.